The public hearing portion of the meeting. And I realize everyone has, the public has waited a very long time here. Again, for instructional purposes, we are filling out yellow speaker cards. They're up to the left of the podium. We're asking you to please fill out your name and address. Hand them to Charlie, and he will hand them to me. I will then read off the names as they're handed to me by Charlie. And we're asking that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We have a large stack of cards, speakers who want to address the commission. And Charlie will be timing each speaker. And I think, Charlie, do you, what's your method of letting the speaker know that they are approaching or at the three minutes?
We have a big hook, don't we?
Okay.
When it gets to, well...
Charlie, what you can do is, why don't you give me a 30-second time limit? And I can key the fact that the speaker has 30 seconds.
All right.
Is it, will that work for you?
Sure. And when, but when three minutes is up, I'm going to say the speaker's time has expired.
I'll try to give a 30-second warning, so that the speaker can...
You want me to just sort of...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that sounds fine. So, the first speaker card we have is Tom Frenier. I'm actually going to read off a list of names. And if you could please line up behind Tom, so we can do this somewhat efficiently. The next speaker we have is Jason Blaylock. The next speaker is Lance Thornton. The following speaker is Ronald Silverman. And when we get to Ronald, I'll announce a few more names here. So, the first speaker is Tom Frenier.
Frenier. Hello. I'm the owner, CEO of Semi-Freddy Bakery, one block away. The famous 4242 Hollis Building. It's always kind of humbling to see your building on the demolition block down the road. But, anyway, the main reason I came here tonight, and I talked to Tom Carlyle earlier, we've actually sort of reached an agreement that we're gonna, you know, extend, you know, be there for the next seven years. They're gonna honor that. And that's really what I was here about tonight, to make sure they weren't gonna demo the building next week or anything like that. We would love to stay in Emeryville, you know, when that lease expires. We've been here 16 years in June. We moved in the summer, that Del Monte did the last canning over the summer, and then we, we survived the Kaiser scare of eminent domain, and we'll survive the Pixar thing. You know, I just want to say, they've been a great landlord. They've been, they've been easy to work with. It's great to have a landlord that has money to fix things. And, you know, they, just like they are, we're very, I don't know if people know it, but we're very involved in the community as well. We donate over half a million dollars worth of fresh bread to charities every year. We just donated two vans to Ecap. I was on the board that identified Bob Cantor as the new CEO of the Emeryville Board. And we love being in Emeryville. We hope we can stay long-term. But, like I said, Pixar seems like they're pretty straight-up people for a big corporation. And I'm glad to see that the demolition will happen after we leave, so...
We're gonna try to keep you.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Next speaker is Jason Blaylock.
Hi. I just wanted to comment real briefly on the proposed construction here, the new buildings for Pixar. I live about a block from the proposed site, down 43rd, kind of straight down from Ayers-Mindy. And, you know, I think Pixar has done some good things for the community. It's brought a lot of money in. But the reason that I'm here is I want to make sure that the, you know, the new buildings, the new employees, and the changes to the community that happened are done in a fair and equitable way. And I, basically, what I'm here to ask is that the commission here considers, and I strongly urge you to look at doing a full environmental impact report. We have 38 people that came here tonight to ask for this environmental impact report, which is a huge number of people from the community that I, you know, urge you to respond to, being our representatives. And many of them had to leave because of the long explanations of what's happening here and other things to do. But I did want to note that and urge you to vote on doing a full environmental impact report. I don't think it's unfair to say that the commission has a certain vested interest in bringing Pixar into the community. And Pixar obviously has, you know, obvious interest in being here. But we want to make sure that you hear from the entire community and that you look at all of the impacts that this might have. The gentleman from Pixar noted that the construction they're suggesting now is much larger than originally proposed. And I'm not sure if that was taken into the original assessment of the impacts, you know, the brief impacts that was published or reported to the community. I'm a little bit concerned personally about the idea of having a huge parking lot right behind Ayers-Mindy. And Cuppa Cabana and all the other stores that I frequent down there, that was one of the most exciting things to me when I moved here recently, was that to have Ayers-Mindy, which is a worker-owned co-op, which I support very much, right down the street from me. And I don't really want to see, I don't want to really see a big parking deck right behind Ayers-Mindy. I'm still a little bit doubtful about how much of an impact on traffic this is gonna have, and, you know, exhaust, and not to mention sitting out in front of, you know, the coffee shop having a cup of coffee. I want to hear car alarms going off and that kind of thing.
Speaker's time has expired.
So, thank you. I hope you take that into consideration.
Next speaker is Lance Thornton. Lance still here? Next speaker is Ronald Silverman.
In observing and seeing all the presentation that was made tonight, I mean, it looks to me like it's a beautiful project, but there was a few things that I noticed that weren't addressed. And being, I represent the building at 1250 45th Street, excuse me, which is directly to the north of the Pixar present, present building. And there's a huge problem with the shipping and receiving department and the congestion that sometimes occurs, because that is the, as far as I know, the only and the main shipping and receiving location. And there's no onsite, excuse me, there's no onsite staging area that is presently shown on the plan. So, what happens is all the trucks that have to go into the shipping, receiving, and the loading dock have to park or double park in the street, which is on 45th Street, which is directly opposite the main entrance to the building that's at 1250 45th Street. And I don't know if that is gonna be the only shipping, receiving dock that is planned for the whole project. And if it is, I think that it really needs to be taken into consideration that there needs to be other locations for receiving, of receiving trucks. I'm also not quite sure as to the inflow, the egress and ingress into the main parking lot. It looked to me like it was coming in from Park Avenue, and it was exiting out onto 45th Street. It doesn't appear that it would be tied in directly to Doyle heading north, but it wasn't, you know, it's not clear, because on the, on the plan, it doesn't show the perimeter properties that well as to where the driveways line up. Unfortunately, I wasn't, wasn't involved in any of the planning sessions, so I didn't have any input into the, into the overall layout. And I wanted to see if there, if that could be addressed as to, whether there's possibility of any onsite staging areas, and whether there's any future locations for any loading docks. Not to mention also that Pixar has been a wonderful neighbor. They're very responsive to any situations that occur off their campus. They have a very good security staff, and I can see that they have good involvement with the local tenants and people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next list of speakers, Amy Chen, Lorena Melgarreos, Gary Platt, and J. Peter Lanaya, Laner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Amy Chen. I'm the president of my neighborhood associations, Stanford 55th. We have about 40 families in our neighborhood association, and we straddle both Emeryville and Oakland. I am also an active member of Spagia, which is San Pablo Avenue Golden Gate Improvement Association, and council member Nora Davis often comes to our meetings. We have about 250 active members. So, I'm here to speak in support of Pixar. My husband and I moved here three years ago because my husband got his dream job from Pixar. I didn't want to come. We had a nice life in LA, and I, we came up here, and the first thing we did was try to buy ourselves a home. We looked all over. I looked at 300 homes, Albany, El Cerrito, Kensington, Volma Creek, and we finally chose to live here, down in the flatlands. We, we live about 10 blocks from here, on 55th and Fremont. And we chose to live here, down in the, in the flatlands, because we felt we could contribute. I'm also a volunteer tutor with the Oakland Public Schools. So, recently, my groups, my neighborhood association's email Yahoo list received a list of demands from eBays, and it was very interesting, basically asking that in exchange for you all giving Pixar their building permit, certain economic concessions should be extracted. Now, while I support the wealthy of our community taking care of the not-so-wealthy, I do not believe in corporate extortion. If I were to ask anyone here, if I were to force you to support the Sierra Club, would you do so? Many of you will. How about if I forced you to support the Republican Party? Some of you will. How about if I put a gun to your head and forced you to support the National Rifle Association? None of us would want to be support, would want to be forced to support someone else's agenda. In the same case, why would we expect Pixar to be forced to support somebody else's agenda? Pixar has been a good neighbor. Their primary concern is, for charitable purposes, our children's education and children's health.
Speaker's time has expired.
I know they support these causes because I have been a recipient. So, again, I ask you to support Pixar's expansion plans. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. It's Lorena Melgarrejo, it's hard to pronounce, a long name. But I live in Emeryville. I moved here in December, and it's been wonderful. I'm really excited to live here, and thank, and I'm excited to come and talk to you, and also to see that our community, from, you know, coming from all different perspectives, we're interested in making our community better. And definitely having a huge neighbor like Pixar is gonna have an impact in our community. So, it's been great to see that, you know, 40 people came here tonight, too. They, they came from home, they all had to leave their husbands and not make dinner tonight, and they had to go back. But, so, it shows that, you know, we care about our community, and it's not about corporate extortion, I think that's what she called it. I wouldn't call it that, to ask the, you know, a big neighbor to do things that they're already doing, you know, give to children, to education. And what we're asking is basically for, for there to be some sort of accountability. You know, they're making the decisions, we want to give the community, that's great. So, sit down with us, and we'll come up with things that we like and things that we don't like, and, and have some accountability. It's not more than they're already given, it's just, you know, letting us into the loop of making that decision. And so, I wouldn't call it corporate extortion, I would just call it a dialogue, and that's something very needed when we're having a big neighbor like that. So, though we have different perspectives, you know, different sides of the community see it in a different way, I think that we all have the same interests in mind. So, that's something exciting, and we can work with that. But, basically, tonight, I'm here to ask you to vote, to basically do the, the full environmental impact report, so that once you have those results, we can sit down like a community, you're, you're part of the community, you're volunteers, and make decisions. Maybe it is the best idea to have these beautiful buildings built in our community, create new jobs. I'm not against it. I'm a labor organizer. I believe that we need jobs, we need our community to work, we need childcare, all the things that they're already contributing, that's fine. But I don't know what the actual impact is gonna be. I don't know if that's been looked at fully. So, to ask for a full environmental report is something that we came here to do, and you have that decision in your hands to recommend or not to recommend to do that. So, whether you do that or not, I think that we're, we're gonna continue coming and opening this forum for discussions. So, I thank you for your time, and I think that we have a long road ahead of us to make sure that our neighborhood is what we want it to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. J. Peter.
First of all, I would like to compliment all the speakers over here, because very intelligent talk, which is good. When, when, when we got, when I got here as a legal alien in 1998, I came from, actually, I'm born and, I'm born and raised in Holland, so I came in 95 to Germany, where I was three years. And I thought I've seen everything on red tape, and then it was Welcome to California. Not. I've been standing over here, I, we don't get our permit, what's wrong with us, right? What's with my accent, you know? But then again, after, of course, our governor, everything's cool with me. Anyhow, what I was trying to say is that, you know, I, I heard, I think last year, the year before, it was Prop so-and-so, Prop so-and-so in Oakland, right? They wanted more police, but they didn't want to pay for it. And that does not go hand-in-hand. I'm sorry. So, people like, or companies like Pixar, Semi-Freddy's, ourselves, we've been from day one involved in the Emeryville day-to-day business, because a healthy community means a healthy business, and vice versa. And we love to do that, and we keep on doing that, like they do it. So, I speak now as the chairman of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce, which I have the honor to be probably as the first alien over here. I will vanish momentarily. But the 27th, who is that person behind me? The 27th of January, during the State of the City luncheon, and I keep it very brief, we handed a certificate of recognition to Pixar in the name of the Chamber of Commerce. And we said, we want to recognize Pixar's community leadership role in support of the Emory Education Foundation, which we all know was in bad shape when we got over here. I mean, I've seen people go, I've seen them take over and all that. The Emeryville Community Action Program, the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce, the Emeryville Senior Center, the Emeryville Exhibition of the Arts, and for providing jobs, tax, revenue, and bringing recognition to the city of Emeryville. And it was unanimously approved by the Board of Directors of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lannan, could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah. I thought there was some problems with that. My name is Peter Lannan, L-A-A-N-N-E-N. And my father was Shee Plaun, okay, no, that's, that was a joke, sorry.
Thank you. Gary Platt. Next group of names, Liz Altieri, followed by Robert Perlmutter, followed by Bob Cantor, followed by Dr. Stephen Guest, followed by Deborah A. McCarthy. Liz Altieri.
Yeah. I'm here representing the Emory Education Foundation. I'm on the board there. I'm gonna give you a few specifics as to exactly what Pixar has done to support Eif. They've made the largest unrestricted corporate donation to Eif. They've hosted Eif's most successful fundraising events, and they've pledged to continue to do that. They're donating, donating many high-quality computers to the school. As previously said, Randy Nelson, who's the dean of Pixar University, is on the board of Eif. He is now the chair of the fundraising committee. They have provided career-focused tours for the fifth graders at Anna Yates. And this year, they're going to be helping those children make a film. Randy Nelson additionally has been involved in the ESAC meetings and is very familiar with the Emeryville Youth Master Plan. Pixar's also provided professional development for teachers at the district, free of charge to all teachers, and, and led by renowned authors, was in the emeryville.news recently. Given their generosity and their high level of engagement with the school community, we expect their support will continue to increase, and we're very grateful to them for their leadership as a business partner.
Thanks, Liz. Robert Perlmutter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. As you know, my name is Robert Perlmutter, and I'm with the law firm of Schut Mahoney and Weinberger, as you heard earlier this evening. And here on behalf of eBays, which is my client, and the city of Emeryville is not. With respect to the city attorney's introduction and the letter he submitted, I did not receive that letter before I left my office at 10 after 5 this evening. If I had, I would have brought with me a copy of the letter my partner Ellen Garber sent to the city attorney last September, responding to all of the allegations in his letter. And I'll be certain to fax to the planning commission a copy of that letter tomorrow. As you know, we submitted a detailed comment letter to you approximately two weeks ago explaining why, under SEQA, the city simply does not have the legal authority to approve this project as it's presently proposed. I'm not going to repeat all the information in that letter tonight, obviously, though I will summarize a few key points. But before I get to that, I want to make just a brief request that eBays and the citizens of Emeryville who are here tonight, supporting eBays, ask me to make, which is that, as you know, it's now about 10:30, 10:25. There are a number of people who came here with young children, a number of children who came here hoping to speak tonight at 6:30. In the last four hours, a number of them have had to leave. And I know this is not your intent, and I've done enough of these hearings to know they can take a long time, but a number of people were prepared to speak for the first time in their life at a public body that they feel is part of their democracy, left feeling pretty disgusted and disappointed. And I would urge you to take their considerations into account and to consider continuing this public hearing, so that people who waited for four hours and didn't get a chance to speak can get a chance to speak to their, their appointed public officials. The other thing I wanted to emphasize before I get to the SEQA issues is that eBays and the residents it's working with don't oppose Pixar expanding its facilities here in Emeryville. In fact, eBays and those citizens, and you're gonna hear from those of them who are still here tonight, would like to be able to support this project. Unfortunately, they can't do that right now with Pixar's proposal as it currently stands. And the reason for that is that the benefits of that project as proposed now for the city, and there's no doubt that there are a lot of benefits, and you've heard a bunch of them tonight from your staff and from Pixar, but those...
30 seconds.
Thank you. Those benefits, as wonderful as they may sound, are just completely outweighed by the project's adverse impacts on this city, on its environment, and on the quality of life of its residents. With respect to SEQA, as you know, under SEQA, an agency must prepare an EIR whenever it's presented with any substantial evidence that a project might, not will, but might, cause a significant impact on the environment. And when you've had qualified experts submit reports stating that a project will have such impacts...
Speaker's time has expired.
...on traffic, on noise, and on air quality, as we presented, then the city has to prepare an EIR. And I'm here to urge you to do that as responsible public officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Bob Cantor, president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I prepared a very brief, one-page statement for the record, which Mr. Bryant's distributing to you now. Very quickly, we obviously support Pixar's application here, and I have to say, it's not in my comments there. The gentleman who spoke just before me, in our opinion, in our judgment, got it completely wrong. The benefits are not outweighed by the impacts. It's exactly the opposite. The benefits of Pixar currently are tremendous, the promise to be much more. You heard Mr. Flores summarize some of them at the beginning of this proceeding, you've heard some of the others, you heard Tom Carlyle summarize them. This is a model corporate system who started small, is getting bigger and better all the time. And support many, many civic groups and organizations that are very close to us. We believe this expansion is consistent with the neighborhood. Pixar has worked very hard to try to integrate it to the extended can, working with the staff long, many hours in negotiations to make it compatible. They're looking to, to build the bike path, pedestrian path along the San Pablo Avenue, very important. This city has put a lot of resources and time into developing and revitalizing that San Pablo Avenue portion. It's one of my favorite parts of town, and this is very compatible with that, and I think will actually help in that process. And finally, on a bigger picture, sometimes we need to step back and take a look. Approval of this project will send a very strong signal that will continue to reinforce Emeryville's reputation as a progressive and pro-business, business-friendly town. It'll send a message to businesses throughout the region that contrary to our neighbors to the north and the south of us, we are an island of prosperity and, and, and pro-business here. And everybody realizes those benefits. You have a copy of my statement. That concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Dr. Stephen Guest.
Good evening, and my name is Dr. Deborah McCarthy Chrysantz, and I guess I'm representing the medical for Dr. Guest and myself. I'm a dentist, and I've been a dentist here in town for 15 years. And I might say that I'm also on the chamber board and have been involved with the chamber since I've been in town. When Pixar came onto the chamber, I was really pleased from the standpoint of education that they're so involved in the sciences. From a medical standpoint, them really promoting that, that part of the schooling is really important from a medical and dental standpoint, too. We need our kids educated in the sciences, and that's really important to them, too. They need educated kids and educated in the sciences. Also, I'm fortunate enough to have a number of them as patients, and they've been a wonderful group of patients to have, and I hope they continue and grow and make my patient base even bigger. And Dr. Guest, I think, feels the same way as I do. It's really important for them, they can make a bigger impact on education in this town than certainly he and I can. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers, we have a card from Greg Harper, but I believe he's already had to leave. John Gooding, Linda Darmstead, Mary McGruder, Tarina Aguero. I apologize for massacring some of these names, but I'm doing the best I can. John Gooding.
You did mine perfectly.
I know your name, John.
Okay. Good evening to certainly the commissioners and to my fellow citizens. I've been a resident of Emeryville for 20-plus years now, and I have to say that in the last three years since Pixar's been here, it has really been exciting being here. We have a new ability to be really proud. We have had lots of things to be proud of in Emeryville, except probably our education facilities. And it's really wonderful to be able to be proud of having Pixar headquartered here. My grandnieces and nephews, it's hard for me to say grand anymore, but say, ah, Uncle John lives where Pixar is, you know? And that's true for all of us who live here, and the pride that we can take in that. I just want to point out that Pixar's first building, all the construction was done with union labor. I also want to point out that I didn't know which hat to put on tonight. So happens that I'm currently president of the board of Ecap, our local food bank, which serves those in the greatest need in our community. Our largest contributor each year for the last three years has been Pixar. And they don't just write a check. They have somebody in management who's on the board who really works hard in supporting all of the activities at Ecap. I'm on the board and past president of Eif. You've heard a lot of those things. I'm the immediate past chair of the Chamber of Commerce and was proud to be able to get Tom Carlyle to join our board during the time that I was chair. Right now, I'm chair of ESAC, the Emeryville Youth Services Advisory Committee. We are really enthusiastic about the wonderful plans and vision we have for the Center for Communities. Community Life, and Pixar has been supportive of our research, of our efforts, and of our development, not only by serving on ESAC, but in helping to provide us with support and administrative support. I can't stress how important and what a terrific thing it is for our community. They are the model business for setting a standard for all other of the businesses in town, and we certainly hope that you will be as supportive of them as they have been to us. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Linda Darmstead?
Yeah.
Can you state your name?
Yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Taruna Agarwal, and I've been living in Emeryville for almost four years now. Basically, I'm here today representing the youth of the community, and would, we as a community, I would like to say that we are not opposed to the Pixar expansion, but we definitely want Pixar to give back to the community somehow they can, you know, we want Pixar to probably contribute to the job trainings for low-income workers and Emeryville residents, and we want Pixar to hire Emeryville residents for a percentage of jobs that will be created by the expansion, and also provide funds for subsidized childcare for low-income Emeryville residents. And last but not the least, I want the City Council to do a full environmental impact report and make sure that Pixar fulfills our demands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Darmstead. I've lived in Emeryville for about twenty years. I've seen a lot of the growth that's happened in Emeryville, also the congestion that has happened with that growth. It's nice to have companies come into the community. One of the problems that I've seen with Pixar is the lack of knowing what jobs are available at that company. I don't know exactly how they go about advertising. It would be nice to be able to know about jobs that they have. Also, monies that they have, it would be nice to know that that money goes into a specified fund instead of a general fund, because I know general funds can be used for whatever projects need the monies, and not to very specific projects, so it'd be nice to be able to see that happen with the monies that they are willing to give to the community. That basically, a lot of the subjects that have already been covered, so I don't want to go over those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McGruder?
Hello. My name's Mary McGruder. I live in Emeryville. In fact, I've lived here for about twenty-five years, well over twenty-five years. I work at Annegate School. While I appreciate the benevolence of Pixar, I, you know, hope that you will continue to support the schools. We appreciate it, but however, I do have some concerns with the expansion. I expect city officials to address concerns and needs of our community. The additional traffic along Hollis and San Pablo Avenue will continue to increase pollution and congestion. Believe it, some residents along the Triangle do enjoy a view of the Bay Bridge, which is a six-story structure will obstruct. Whatever happened to the affordable housing eliminated by the project, I, along with others, would like you, city officials, to require a full environmental impact report, and as elected officials, take your constituents' demands for community benefits seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of speakers, Vunachima? David Connell? Judy Goff? Forrest G.
She had to leave.
Thank you. David Connell?
I just would like to say that I would be willing to trade places with anyone who wants to speak on this issue and who has to leave. I would be willing to wait if there's someone who wants to speak.
Are you David Connell?
See, not Judy Goff. I think the person you called prior to me was not here.
Okay.
Vunachima?
Yeah, well, there were two. David Connell was next, and then Judy Goff, and then Forrest G. David Connell?
My name is David Connell. I live at forty-three O'Neal Essex Street. Excuse me, I've lived in Emeryville for the last five and a half years. We came here from the Midwest after living there for thirteen years, removing from California, from, as a matter of fact, Oakland, and were amazed and astounded to come back to an Emeryville that we couldn't recognize from twenty-odd years of prior experience in the Bay Area. It's an extremely interesting and vital community. Pixar is a major element of the vitality of the community, but I don't believe that it's either the goose that laid the golden egg nor a pigeon to be plucked. And what bothers me more than anything else about the way the discussion has gone, beginning with a community meeting that I went to about three weeks ago, sponsored by Ebase, and going back about a year to the appearance of Ebase at the Triangle Neighbors Community Meeting, the tendency to construe the issue of Pixar's performance in the community as something subject to demands, consultation, discussion, political process, I fully support and buy into. I'm not sure that the proposal to insist on a full environmental impact study is motivated by a concern for the community. It seems to me that the staff's negotiations and studies and the consultants that they have brought in have quite adequately explored that. My concern is that you, as appointed officials, and that the City Council, as elected officials, maintain control of this process. We've already seen a shot across the bow concerning Ebase's counsel on the part of the city attorney. We've seen a shot across the bow from Ebase's attorney to the city challenging its ability to make a decision in this matter. I'm a voter. My Triangle neighbors are voters. There are many others in the city of Emeryville who are voters. I expect you, in the City Council, as city officials, to maintain control over this issue and make an intelligent decision, or I will be in the ballot box making an adverse decision. Thank you.
Judy Goff?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Central Labor Council of Alameda County. The Central Labor Council represents one hundred and thirty-five AFL-CIO unions in the county. We represent one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred working families in the county, three hundred and fifty of whom live in Emeryville. The Labor Council supports requiring greater community benefits from developers and corporations. There's been wonderful things that have happened in Emeryville. I agree with the previous speakers about that. There have been, it's a Mecca for retail. There are many businesses, and Pixar is probably a real outstanding example of a corporation who's giving back to the community. But there's been a proliferation, with this proliferation of jobs, forty-five percent of the jobs created in Emeryville do not pay enough to allow two workers working full-time to support their family. Community benefits agreements, which provide job training, local hiring, local hiring, the right to organize for entry-level workers, affordable housing, and childcare are things that combat poverty. The city and Pixar are good for the community, but not all of the community. And when people say, "Don't try and leverage Pixar," gains working people have made have never been given to them. They have always had to come, and they've always had to fight for it, including raising the minimum wage, including living wages. I wish I'd known when all this development was going on here. There should have been a living wage imposed that would have allowed, with all the giveaways and the subsidies that happened with the building of all these retail businesses, the financial advantage to the people coming here to do business here in the city. There should have been some living wage considerations. We're a day late and a dollar short, but we are here making that ask. If that's seen as something that we shouldn't do, I, for one, am not ashamed to do that and to stand up for low-wage workers. We asked for a full environmental impact report. There are many, many, many things that will happen with this big campus, and they are not all mitigated, or to the extent that they should be.
The speaker's time has expired.
You should listen when it says that you need to have a full environmental impact report. We stand with that, and we urge you to do that.
Time has expired. Ma'am, thank you. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I just have one more comment. I just have to make this, because I heard so many good things in this room when there was talk about the previous matters that came before you, the desire for people here to have a bigger sense of community. And an upscale bar's been approved. I think that's a great idea, but how about a worker's center for workers within low wages where they can come and they know they can get reservices there to be lifted out of poverty?
Thank you.
That, too, would contribute to community.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Forrest G.
I'm Forrest G. I'm the current President of the Emory School Board, and Liz Altieri and John Gooding have let you know about most of the good work that Pixar does for the education of the students here in Emeryville. And I just need to highlight some other things that they do. Last year, Pixar, through its fundraiser, funded all the college scholarships for all the kids going to college that applied for a scholarship this previous year. They provide after-school tutors. Right now, I believe we have five. We have another ten in the queue that are tutoring our children here at the schools. Their buildup, which will promote parcel tax, educational parcel tax dollars, what that funds specifically for our students here in Emeryville are art, music, counselors, librarians, science, math, literacy. Those are things that all of the students here at the Emeryville School District benefit from. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Forrest. The next group of speakers, Shirley Faircloth? Bill Ruder? Difficult one. Shailushi Baxi?
She had to leave. She submitted written comments to the commissioner.
Thank you. Liz Pearlman?
She also had to leave.
Thank you. Bridget Birch? And Sarah Harper. Before we have the next group of speakers, we only have a few more cards, and if you would like to address the Commission, the speaker cards are up to the left of the podium. Please fill out with your name and address and submit them to Charlie, and he will forward them up to me to read off.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Faircloth. I live on Sixty-third Street in Emeryville. I've lived there for ten years. I have seen the expansion of Emeryville as a kind of a mixed blessing in terms of traffic, and I'm sure in terms of pollution. I also think I'm glad that Pixar has helped with housing, with affordable housing, but I think Pixar is quite a wealthy company. They could probably afford to do a little more, since they were, where they're building was supposed to be a place that was providing housing. I also am a person who was a working woman for about forty-six years in a unionized job. I'm happy to hear that it was a union job for the construction, and I hope the next one will be, too. I'm also interested that the jobs that are provided should be offered to Emeryville residents first, before they're offered to anybody else. That would also cut down on all the traffic, because they'll be here. And I really hope and pray that, you know, that you'll respect the workers' rights to organize a union if they so choose. I was always a union member for years and years and years, and I can't tell you how much my life has been improved by being in a union. Thank you.
Bill Ruder? Did I get that correct?
My name is Bill Reuter, like the news agency.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Two Commodore Drive, Number 175, and I've been a resident of the city of Emeryville for twenty-five years. I'm not here as a critic of the growth-for-revenue strategy that's been adopted by the City Council and by John Flores. John Flores, in fact, corrected me. It's not only growth for revenue, but growth for diversity as well, and I'm sure he's quite right. I've been a supporter of the existing City Council members, and I'm appreciative of the volunteer service that the commissioners perform, such as they're performing this evening. And I'm not anti-Pixar. Indeed, I'm going to heap a little more praise on Pixar, on top of all the other praise that's been heaped on them. It's an asset to the community. It's a magnet for future positive development. The revenue flow that it's generating is going to help the city. It creates jobs, and I was delighted to hear that, and I heard it from Tom Carlyle the other day, that the construction of the buildings already in existence on the campus was union labor. That makes sense to me. And the give-backs to the community have been substantial, schools, what have you. They support transportation. They support a variety of things. But I'm also pro-Emeryville and serious about my support for Emeryville, and I absolutely don't see any reason in the world for you folks not to support the idea of a full environmental impact study to find out what the expansion of Pixar campus, which I think will be very desirable, in fact will be, and to sort out the problem of mitigations and to make sure we understand what the consequences will be. And I also don't see a thing wrong in the future for you civic officials, perhaps particularly for the City Council members, to take seriously the idea of community benefit agreements when big projects go forward, or even small projects in the city of Emeryville. So I guess, in effect, I'm saying to you and to others who serve the city, as good citizens do, slow down, take a deep breath, make sure we know what all the consequences of the expansion are, and let's make sure that by a process of listening to voices that perhaps you haven't heard before...
Thirty seconds.
...in Emeryville, that both the city of Emeryville will prosper and that Pixar, one of our best neighbors in the community, will prosper as well. Thanks for listening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bill. Bridget Birch?
Yes, good evening. My name's Bridget Birch. I live at ten sixty-five Forty-Fifth Street, apartment number eleven, Triangle Courts. I'm a single mother of four children. I've been in this community for about ten years, and I've watched all this development from Home Depot, Kmart, Pack and Save, everything come up. And in the last ten, in these last ten years, with Pixar coming in, and I have nothing against them, I love their movies and great, thank you very much. My kids love them, because I have to go out and purchase them, but the fact of that with this new development is fine, okay? You have to develop, I understand that. I've been in construction myself, okay? I have a son. I have two sons, as a matter of fact. One who would love to do animation, and he loved the tour you gave him, and he came home and he was so enthused about it. I would love to see something put towards education of our children in the community that want to be animators. of our children in the community that want to be animators. I have another one who is in carpentry, who just got out of school from Treasure Island. I would love to see him on a job. He's having a very hard time at this point, very low period. No one's giving him a chance. I would love to see the people in our community, like Pixar, give my children a chance, our people a chance, to be workers. I've done food service. I can't get a job in there. Could I? I mean, you know, seriously. I'm a struggling mother. I'm a full-time student. It is hard for me right now, you know, to changing jobs and careers, okay? Also, with, if we don't have this environment impact report, I'm going to have to spend a lot of time with my children in the hospital, because that dust and that dirt, we have, they start having asthma attacks. I have a daughter who has allergy attacks, so bad. She looks like a raccoon. She can't go to school. That means that that hurts her education. And Mary McGruder knows it. She's always calling me. Octavia's having another attack. She has to come home. It's hard on me, and it's hard on her. And it hurts me to my soul that, and my child loves school. She loves it so much. I'm just hoping that you really look at what's going to happen here, the traffic. I have children who have to cross that street, San Pablo, myself, and I've seen people and cars almost hit them, and me even, myself, okay? Just really look at the big picture here, the people in the community, please. Thank you.
Sarah Harper. Sarah Harper. Thank you. The last card I have is for Jason Crouch. And if anyone else would like to address the commission, I'd ask that you fill out a speaker card, give it to Charlie so he can bring it up.
Commissioners, good morning. Oh, not quite. My name is Jason Crouch. I'm a resident homeowner of Emeryville, member of the Board of ECAP, member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a local businessperson, volunteer, voter, taxpayer, et cetera, et cetera. Commissioners, I had the opportunity this past autumn to visit my mother's hometown of Messina, New York. It was a truly eye-opening experience coming from an Emeryville perspective. Messina, New York, is the antithesis of Emeryville. It has become a stagnant, depressed, failing town. It was once one of the more desirable, growing towns in the St. Lawrence River. It has lost its vibrance and desirability due in large part to its inability to evolve with changing times and attract and retain businesses that have the insight and flexibility to maintain a healthy business climate. They have failed thus far to maintain the spirit of their town and their community, which is directly related to the health of local employers, its commercial, real estate, and other tax bases, and corporate benefactors, just to name a few. Emeryville, on the other hand, as you well know, is singing quite a different tune at this juncture. It has become an enviable, thriving, mixed-use community that has attracted attention from around the nation, let alone our neighbors, and I dare say, the globe. Enter Pixar, stage left, right? You've already heard from others, and you know yourselves, you know yourselves, the commitment Pixar has shown to Emeryville. This is not a have-and-have-not situation. This is not an us-against-them scenario. The question in my mind tonight is, where have those standing in opposition or with their hands out this evening been? I know where I've been. I've been in Emeryville. I've been watching hungry people eat. I've been watching our children get tutored and learn. I've been watching our community grow and its coffers grow. And I've been watching opportunities unfold for some that might not otherwise have seen it. I have seen a consistent and dedicated commitment displayed by Pixar, its executives, and its employees. Pixar is a bragging point for us on many, many, many levels. Commissioners, please, do your charge. Do what's right for the city. And in closing, I simply say that I stand, as another citizen, supportive of Pixar and their continued success and growth as a member of our community here in Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Carla Bass. Just received one more speaker card, Carla Bass.
Carla Bass, I need to say my address again?
No, we have it on the record. Thank you.
What I've heard tonight is basically two sides of a fight. And I'm not sure why it has to be a fight. I don't think Pixar is the Antichrist here. And I am a proud member of Local 3 Union Operating Engineers, living in Emeryville for five years. And what I'm looking for is not only their continued support of the community, but also to incorporate the residents and try to figure out a way to get training for the residents, because without training, you can't have access to jobs that allow you to stay in Emeryville, because the prices at Emeryville have gone up in the last five years since I've been here. So if it's too much to ask to just incorporate the community in your decision-making, then I don't know what else to do, because we live here. They're talking about commuting, and it's like, well, there are people that live right here in Emeryville. It's like, find a way to allow for some of the community residents to get trained to work at Pixar, and not as food servers, not as security guards. I mean, without access, there is no way to get that training. Because of the fact that I was in a union, I got the training that was required to do my skill to be able to afford to live here in the Bay Area. And hopefully, you'll just find a way to allow members of this community, Emeryville, not Berkeley, not Oakland, not San Francisco, but Emeryville, to partake in the jobs that Pixar is creating that, you know, can afford a family of four to live on. And hopefully, you'll take that into consideration and to look at the environmental impact of this expansion project. I'm in construction. I'm for building. I'm not against building Pixar, but I'm saying, look at it and talk with the community, not against the community, to try to bring this project to light. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission during the open public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.